The joint meeting of the Katati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Katati Community Redevelopment Agency. It's Tuesday, June 9th about 7:06. We were adjourned to a closed session, which we will have to resume after the meeting. So we have nothing to report out at this time. And Councilmember Harvey is attending remotely today. So if we could have roll call, please.
Mayor Skilman?
Present.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Present.
Councilmember DeLasso?
Here.
Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
Note that she's participating remotely. Councilmember Landman?
Here.
Thank you. And if everybody could rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now I'll move on to approval of minutes and notice of waiving reading of all resolutions and ordinances introduced and/or adopted under this agenda. We have two items. One is the City Council regular meeting from March 24th.
I'll go ahead and move for the March 24th.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
May I remind you that due to the teleconference participation, the votes will be needed to taken by roll call.
Thank you for that. Okay, so could do a roll call vote for the approval of the March 24th meeting.
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Moore?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore, excuse me. Councilmember DeLasso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Okay, then we'll move on to approval of the City Council regular meeting on May 26th.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and second. Can I have an all roll call vote, please?
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLasso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to housekeeping items. And if I can turn to our city clerk and ask you to read those, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following. Silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways do carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the south wall of the chamber. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker cards in the designated tray located by the city clerk. When their name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barich.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. For the benefit of the audience, my name is George Barich. I'm a former Katati City Council member here. I've served on the council. I've been coming to these meetings religiously for about 18 years now. Rarely will I miss a meeting, and I want to bring to the attention of the public that these housekeeping rules are not for the benefit of the public, they're to fool the public and to control the public. For a couple of years now, I've been coming before the council, asking them to clarify where in the heck did they ever get these housekeeping rules? Who came up with them? Who voted on them? Where did they come from? Did they borrow them from another town? Because most towns come up with a set of recommended conduct for members of the public to keep order and to keep the meeting moving along and so forth, but they actually bring their ideas of the rules forward. They have a healthy discussion about them. They ask the public to come forward and speak on the matter and offer any suggestions. And then they vote on it, and it becomes a city policy. And then the cities will review this policy every couple of years and see how it's working, whether they need to add to the housekeeping rules or delete. But we haven't done that this way in Katati. And people that come to these meetings need to know this. This council will not sit down and talk about it. We don't know where behind closed doors these rules came up or come up with. And, you know, the silence here is deafening. And it's really an embarrassment to the citizenry, to the taxpayers who pay for this government, that we can't get a straight answer from anybody why things aren't done the appropriate way in accordance with the law. I don't know whether egos are involved, or because it's my idea that I've come forward with this request that I'm getting stonewalled about it, but it's a crying shame. And I would again ask the council to do the right thing, to merely put this on the agenda, on a future agenda. You know, you don't have to admit that you made any mistakes. We're all bigger than that. Just say, "We're going to put this on the agenda. We're going to have a healthy discussion about it. We're going to do things the right way. We're going to let the public comment on it, and we're going to have an official policy." But right now, we don't have an official policy. And it's kind of a hallmark and very typical about how other things are kind of done here in the city. So with that, I would ask you to still reconsider and bring this matter back in a form that is respectable and legal and make our citizenry proud. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the housekeeping items? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll move on to announcements. The City of Katati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Katati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Katati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Runner Park Katati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121 or visit sonomalibrary.org. The Katati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Katati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com, which is N-I-X-L-E dot com. The Katati Farmers Market began on June 4th, and it runs through August 27th every Thursday afternoon, starting at 4:30 in La Plaza Park. The 35th Annual Katati Jazz Festival will be held on June 21st in La Plaza Park. This free event will have food, arts, and crafts, and live jazz music. And I would like to now take a moment and turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obed. I understand we have a new reserve officer to introduce this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I am happy to announce that we do have a new police reserve officer, Andrew Tyfer. Come on up, Andrew, to the podium. So Andrew was born in San Francisco and raised in Santa Rosa, so he's local. And he is a graduate of the SRJC Police Academy. He does have a background in security. And his family lives in Santa Rosa, his mom, dad, and two brothers. I guess he has a twin brother. There he is. Yeah, okay. And I understand that one of his hobbies is working on building and driving old pickup trucks. And he's currently in our field training program, and we all hope that he will achieve the Level 1 patrol status, which will allow him to patrol on his own for the city at some point in the future, hopefully near future. So I'd be happy to open it up to you to add any comments.
Counsel, I really appreciate this opportunity. And I'll do great here. This is a great place to start working. I've learned a lot. You know, it's only been a week and a half. I look forward to the future. Thank you, Chief Barich, for having the confidence in me, pushed me this far.
All right, well, welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right. And did Chief or anybody else want to make a comment? Are we done embarrassing this poor young man in front of everyone?
Unless the council has any questions that they'd like to ask him.
So Councilmember Landman?
I don't think we should let him off that easy. After all, you're training for law enforcement. You should get a thicker hide, I think. That would be a good thing. Well, I'm just going to say, "Welcome." I think it's great. I always love seeing the enthusiasm on these faces, and particularly the family support, that's a big thing. I just went through this personally. My nephew graduated from the JC program and just got picked up by Novato a few weeks ago. So we did the same exact thing with my family, and it was a great time. So I know what you're all feeling, and happy to have you here. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Welcome, Andrew. I hope you have a long career, and it's not just a place to learn and move on. You have a twin?
Yes, I do.
Identical or fraternal?
Fraternal.
Uh-huh. I'm a twin myself. I have an identical twin brother.
Really?
Yep. Welcome aboard, and I wish you success.
Thank you very much.
All right, Councilmember DeLasso?
Andrew, yeah, great having you here. I'm just wondering if Officer Copp and Sergeant Borns maybe said something wrong to you today? Because everybody in the audience is on this side of the room, and they're the only two not quite sure what's going on over here tonight. But anyway, hopefully they're treating you well over in the department. And it's great to know that you've got this knack to work on trucks, it sounds like, old trucks specifically?
Yes.
And then there might be some opportunities, actually, even in our fleet. Hopefully not. Hopefully we're replacing them in a regular cycle, but just in case, we can use you for that.
They're Fords, so I don't do Ford.
Okay, all right, then. Never mind. Anyway, great to have you here. Congratulations, and I'm sure the mayor will ask you to introduce probably the large contingency you have with you tonight.
Yes. And I know it's hard remotely, but Councilmember Harvey, did you want to echo in on that as well?
I'd just like to say, "Welcome," and thank you for choosing our community, and hopefully I can meet you sometime in person. But welcome.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. So, yeah, I'll just echo their sentiments. Welcome, thank you, and thank you in advance for keeping us safe. Is there anybody you would like to shine the spotlight on who's here this evening, so we can kind of turn the tables a little bit?
Well, my whole family's here. This is my dad, Claude Tyfer. This is my mom, Carrie. They've both been very supportive in this whole thing, from the get-go, academy and everything. My cousin Chelsea, Uncle Norman. Two brothers, Chris, he's with Cal Fire, so. My twin brother Nicholas, and my grandma, Shoney. And my good friend, Michael.
All right, excellent. All right, well, thank you very much for being here this evening, and it's really nice to meet you, and please be careful out there.
Thank you.
I know I'm aging myself. I keep quoting that old TV show, but it's just every time I want to do it, so, yeah. It's so appropriate. All right, so thank you very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
There are no changes.
Okay, thank you. So we will move on to citizens' business. So I will read our legal ease at the moment. Any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any items not listed on the agenda during this period. Comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for items on the consent calendar. So if you'd like, I was going to say, "We can take a moment and let you guys sneak out." Have a good evening, everyone. So I have... So on citizens' business, I have a comment card from Lori Alderman. We'll give them a moment to quiet the hallways. Okay, go ahead.
My name's Lori Alderman. I just wanted to disclose, too, that I have a disability, and so I usually have an extra minute. So I usually have four minutes. As I looked over everything this week, all I wanted to ask was why? So here are my questions. Why are you spending approximately 3.1 million, which comes out of the grants fund, which was approximately 1,750,000 transferred from the general fund for the downtown specific plan? General fund monies are property taxes and sales taxes, even the increased sales tax for Measure G. Measure G monies were for current essential services, not for future development and pet projects. When did you ever ask the citizens of Katati if they wanted... what they wanted to spend their money on out of the general funds, whether they wanted the downtown specific plan? Where or why was the amount budgeted for the downtown specific plan changed from the resolution on January 24th of approximately 1,600,000 to over 1,000,000 more dollars at 2.6 million in the six months since that meeting? The federal grant, I believe, was for 1.1 million. Why are the reserves being dipped into in this coming year's budget? The reserves are currently at approximately 2.9 million, and our budget is projected to be at approximately 1.5 million by June 2016. Why is it since 2007, the greatest amount of building permits in Katati has been four new building permits? With both years being only one building permit per year, do we have such a high-cost community and economic development department? Why push retail when we have a 30% retail vacancy rate in approximately 20 businesses that are for sale in Katati, including the Shamrock Quarry, Valero Gas Station, the shopping center in La Plaza, and that most lease rates are below market rates at $1 per square foot a month? Why is the budget geared almost exclusively to the east side of the freeway part of Katati? There is only 37,000 budgeted specifically for the west of the freeway Katati projects, despite the west part having high property values up to 2 million and high property taxes. There is at least 4 million in projects on the east side of the freeway in this budget, e.g., park improvements in the downtown specific plan. Why, lastly, have you not spent a cent to deal with explosions, environmental damage, known and unknown, and the city's negligence on the west side? Not one action has occurred or one note has been put up in almost a year since the multiples of explosions. This full story of what has been happening out on the west side and the city's negligence needs to be addressed. And to assess the environmental damage caused by the... such as the freeze being power washed down the street into the city's storm drain. You all have full knowledge of these issues. There is no way that your east side pet projects should take precedence over the harm done to my family and the west side neighborhood because of your negligence or great work to keep your job and benefits. Start living in the present and do as right and moral.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment during citizens' business? Okay. With that, I will close citizens' business, and we'll move on to direction of future agenda items. Does anybody have any agenda items they would like to add onto our future agenda?
No, it's mine, thank you.
Okay. All right. And any from you, Councilmember Harvey?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. So then we will move on to the regular agenda. So we have two issues or two items this evening on the agenda. The first being revision of existing truck route ordinance. And it looks like we're being asked for direction on this item. So I'll turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obed.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So previously, council had directed staff to look into the issue of truck routes in Katati. And attached to the staff report, you'll find several documents that we provided as part of the research. The first attachment is a citation from the California Vehicle Code concerning the local jurisdiction's ability to set truck routes. There's... the second attachment is just a sample ordinance from a different city that had some potentially applicable sections, restrictions in the central business district, and also provisions on trucks originating inside or outside the city. And then finally, is our attached... the third attachment is our own ordinance, 785, which was adopted in 2006, which establishes truck routes in Katati. And in our current ordinance, the currently established truck routes are Old Redwood Highway East Katati and SR Highway 116, which is the Caltrans roadway, but designated truck route in our ordinance. And our current ordinance allows for establishment of truck routes if vehicles exceed some specified weight or length, and separately allows for establishment of up to a one-year restriction on truck routes for the express purposes of protecting the street if there's some sort of structural damage. And then requires pneumatic tires for vehicles over five tons. And when created by ordinance, the city engineer can designate truck routes for vehicles over five tons, and restricts the truck routes to those routes designated, which is Old Redwood Highway East Katati and Highway 116. And then prohibits trucks over five tons unless it's a posted truck route. And that's something you'll find both in the California Vehicle Code, as well as virtually any ordinance, is the requirement for posting truck routes. The vehicle code, which is the overarching law that regulates this type of thing, provides cities with general authority and fairly broad authority for establishing truck routes within their jurisdiction. And there have been concerns that have come forward in the council packet, actually in the supplement to the council packet that you all received tonight. There's several letters from Katati residents and business owners concerning this topic. And the concern centers primarily around trucks using Old Redwood Highway as a through route, and the impact that has, particularly in some parts of Old Redwood Highway. And I will say that in our review... so ours, as you know, is set at five tons, which is 10,000 pounds. Anything over that would be considered a truck. That would have to be on a truck route. And then some other nearby jurisdictions, like Sebastopol has a three-ton limit, which is a 6,000-pound limit, to designate it as a truck route. Runner Park is 7.5 tons, which is 15,000-pound limit. And then there's other examples, like Santa Rosa, which doesn't set a specific numeric threshold, but designates... leaves that authority up to the city engineer to establish what a, I guess, what a state of specific street. One, when a truck route is established or reestablished, one of the things that the council would need to do is to establish it based on findings. We would have to have specific findings that would create the basis for the truck route. And I wanted to actually hand it off to Robin here to describe what those findings would have to look like.
All right, well, as Damian mentioned, generally, there are some rather general findings in the ordinance itself. It is important to have in your record, and that can be through even communication beyond the actual findings, a basis for justifying the restrictions. But the courts give cities wide latitude, and they do not second-guess what the record shows or what the city's findings are. The key with regard to implementing these kinds of restrictions is to provide one alternative route for trucks to travel. And the courts have said it need not be a convenient route, it need not be the most economical or inexpensive route. You know, it may actually cost businesses more money to follow your restrictions. There may even be issues of safety. But barring absolutely clear and undisputed evidence, cities are given wide latitude. So typically, the kinds of findings that you see are related to wear and tear on roads, traffic bottlenecks created, noise, other impacts of the truck traffic. So in thinking about what kind of restrictions, if any, you might wish to add or change, those are the types of considerations that you would want to have in mind.
And I'll just conclude by saying that the roadway in particular that was highlighted as a potential issue was Old Redwood Highway, which is currently designated as a truck route. And that, I believe that was the concern initially brought up by the council, as well as the citizens and business owners that are... whose letters are included in the council packet tonight. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for comments, and then we'll open it up to public comment. So Councilmember DeLasso?
Sure, thank you. The one thing, as I was reading through the agenda, that just kind of kept popping through my mind is, how do we enforce something like this? I mean, you sort of have to catch their hand in the cookie jar. So, you know, and I'm not saying it's wrong to have these restrictions, because I think I'm certainly supportive of that conceptually, it's just... but how do we take it to the next step? Because, you know, if there's this reputation like, "Well, you know, I've driven through three times in the last two weeks, and nobody's caught me, I'm just going to keep doing it through Katati, because I'm short cutting coming from maybe northern Petaluma. I don't want to get on the freeway because it's crazy. I'm going Old Red, and then maybe I'll even do it through Runner Park, et cetera." You know, how do we address... to me, that's the bigger issue, is, you know, we can have fines, and you can have speeding fines like we do all over the place, but unless you catch somebody, then does it really make an impact?
You know, I don't know if you would... let me answer... so this is how I would envision it happening, is that if the council were to provide direction to move forward on an ordinance to create... to effect the change on the truck route for Old Redwood Highway, the first step would be to, you know, an ordinance adoption, of course, is publicly noticed. The, you know, the trucking companies that are in the general vicinity would probably be noticed, and just, you know, give them a heads up, like, "Hey, this is happening," so you know. And then presuming the council moves forward with an adoption of an ordinance, then the signage, the physical signage would change, which would... it's a prerequisite to be able to enforce anything. And then the third thing is, you know, after all those things have happened, the third thing is it would be police enforcement. And most of the trucks that come through that we're talking about, I mean, there's always... I should point out that there's always exceptions, even in any code, there'd be exceptions for deliveries within that area, right? So they wouldn't be prohibited necessarily. And things like garbage trucks and buses wouldn't necessarily be prohibited. But if, you know, the 10,000-pound weight limit, that's pretty low compared to the most of the trucks that we see. I mean, even unloaded, like dump trucks, are 40,000 pounds. So it'd be pretty easy for even a layperson to spot what would be, you know, what would be a violating truck versus a regular truck. And I think the challenge from an enforcement perspective would be more of a, is this truck delivering or not delivering within the, you know, within that area?
Right.
And I can't, I mean, I can't think of a lot of trucks like that. I mean, there's a couple... there certainly are some kind of food-related trucks for restaurants. But I think if an ordinance were to go into place, there'd be some period of time to work in what trucks are, you know, working with the businesses, you know, when do you get deliveries? What kind of trucks are they? And that might help with the enforcement and...
Sure. And it seems like, you know, either through the planning department or through the chamber, you know, we could probably get a lot of that information. You know, businesses could be queried and say, you know, "Do you guys have these really large delivery trucks? If so, how often do they come to your business?" So I can see that there's a time involved. And I'm glad you did say, because that's one thing I want to point out, is this is all predicated on whatever we decide, it's all predicated on the fact that there still has to be deliveries to the businesses that are here and to future businesses that may come. So... but, and I'm not sure... I'm not sure I was really asking for an answer. I think it's a tough question, because there's some unknowns to this, but it's... seems like at first, it has to be something educational. In other words, you know, if there's an egregious issue, we can deal with that. But I think, again, conceptually, it makes perfect sense, because if people are just using... if these large trucks are just using it as shortcuts, you know, there's a million reasons why we don't want them to be doing that, so. But that was kind of my main question. I think you've started to address that, and I appreciate that. And I do hope that we get in... And I do hope that we get into a bit of a discussion on the concept of the central business district. Sounded interesting, may or may not apply here, I don't know, but it'd be interesting if we have some kind of a discussion on that at some point tonight. I'm done for now, thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Lammon.
Well, I have plenty to say on this later, but in terms of just questions for right now, I guess number one, I think my question was the answer, I just wanted to clarify through our city attorney. When we first talked about this, geez, almost two years ago, it seemed like there was a clear path legally to doing this. Looking through the material tonight, it looked like that was very open, in terms of looking at our local ordinance, as well as California Vehicle Code. And I believe the term you used was wide latitude, so in terms of legality, that's clear, as long as findings are clear, and there's, most importantly, an alternate route offered. So just confirming, that is indeed the case. Good, that's good to hear. The last thing, I'm going to agree with my colleague, the first question you asked was, one of the important ones in my mind, would be enforcement. The one thing that strikes me, I would imagine most people driving have a bill of lading or something like that where they're delivering to, so that's something you could always produce, if you are delivering in the area. I think that might settle that, it might be easier to deal with, rather than trying to get a schedule of who delivers when and what days, because I'm sure there's occasional deliveries just out of the blue, maybe, too. And the last thing we want to do is make sure that we, in any way, make that more difficult. But I guess I just wanted to check in general, if, this would be a question more for law enforcement in the town, if we're in the position we need to be, if we have it, we need to be able to enforce this adequately. Because I imagine the first few months would be a time for people to get used to this, but after that, I'd agree, you'd want to make sure people recognize that there is some teeth to this law, because otherwise, there's no reason to do it. So I guess a general question I'd be asking, are we prepared, do we see any issues in trying to make sure we actually follow through with this?
I'll just, I'll just start off by saying that I think most of the trucks that are, that I've, just I've, you know, witnessed moving through the down, like the downtown Old Redwood Highway, are obviously not making deliveries anywhere in town. I mean, they're, they're construction-type trucks, and, you know, or, you know, big tanker trucks, that sort of thing. And, you know, I think it gets a little bit trickier when you get into some of the kind of food trucks and things like that, but I'll hand it to the chief.
Well, one of the things that I would like to know and figure out is, would there be a point associated with the citation? Because it doesn't sound like with an ordinance, there would be a point against your driver's record. But when you're, when you're delivering for a living, when you're a truck driver for a living, the point against your licenses, you know, is a big deal. So if we could associate it with a vehicle code where there's a point against the driver, that would, that would certainly be a benefit, so I'd like to look into that. And then beyond that, you know, we, we do focus special enforcement on driver violations, you know, as you know, whether it's texting and driving is our focus. We could certainly, if it's an issue and people aren't obeying the law, the police department could, we could do focused enforcement from time to time, so the drivers know that we are watching, that we are issuing citations.
That's very helpful, because I think certainly in the beginning, some sort of focused enforcement would be something to plan for, because just people have to learn, you know, it's difficult. You can repeat a message over and over, you can mail, you can notice, you can have stories in the newspaper, and yet lots of us miss things. So I think we want to make sure we take the time to make sure people actually get the sense of this, so that would be, that would be helpful. In terms of associating this with a vehicle code, see, I can understand the motivational aspect of that very clearly. It'd be interesting to see if that's a standard practice, because I know, just looking at what we have here in this, there are other communities that do protect downtown districts and special areas of their towns. So I'd want to make sure that this is, if it's a standard sort of practice, and if we have the latitude, to give people a few passes, I believe, too, if the officers have that individual latitude, certainly during the startup phase, that might be something that was workable. That's all the questions I have for now, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Other than that, what Councilmember Delauso brought up, but I think that was pretty well explained.
Okay, great, thanks. Vice Mayor Moore?
I think this is a subject that we need to explore a little bit more, and I would be in support of something along those lines. I would like to be able to understand if you were a large truck coming north on Old Redwood Highway, and then realized that you're approaching a city where there, you don't have the truck route readily available to you there, where you might turn off or turn around in a situation like that? If you would have to, you know, do some sort of a U-turn at Valparaiso and Old Red, or, I mean, what would that look like? Railroad? But if you got past railroad, then you're-
I mean, I think as a practical matter, it probably would be, so, you know, we would definitely, if it were Old Redwood Highway, for example, it would have to be signed at the southern city limit there. Because you wouldn't want people to get hardly into town and then have to find a way around in the residential streets.
Right.
And some sort of advanced signing was, would have to be something we'd have to talk to the county about, you know, like railroad, for example, or some other way to get over to Petaluma Hill, depending on where they're coming from.
That would be my only concern at this point. I think it's a concept that I could support. When you see that most of the trucks coming up Old Red, that I've noticed, are transfer trucks coming from all to do it being Petaluma Hill, down there, hay trucks, things like that. I don't know that there's a lot of hay being delivered in downtown Cataná. If you were going to address an ordinance, and the reason why you might want to amend or adopt an ordinance, and part of that concern was based on noise, would you have to limit it to just trucks? Because if you'll notice in one of the comments that were presented to us, there was a concern not only regarding the truck noise coming on Old Red, but also motorcycles leaving, going Old Red South through that residential area and lighten it up.
So the vehicle code will cover the noise portion of it?
Okay.
And you can receive a citation. So those motorcycles that are making that much noise are probably modified, and they, per the vehicle code, they can receive a fix-it ticket and have to change their exhaust back to get it signed off.
To a reasonable decibel.
Yes, yeah.
So it could apply to that as well?
Yes.
I would be very supportive of exploring this further.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, it's definitely an issue that clearly indicated by how many people rode in as well on the issue, about establishing a truck route and having some parameters set as far as trucks that come in that are not delivering to the local area. That way, we can take into account folks that are causing wear and tear perhaps on our roads, and then not contributing to the fixing of those wear and tear issues. So I will bring it back to public comment at this point. I've got two comment cards, one is from Lori Alderman.
Okay. No problem. So we'll move on to the next speaker card I have, is from Richard, I'm going to say that wrong.
Sengas.
Sengas, okay, thank you.
So, good evening, I'm Richard Sengas, I live on, at 101 Ross Street, but my bedroom window hangs over Old Redwood Highway, right above all the commercial, the shops, right there at Frog Song. And I am glad to see this on the agenda. I would encourage you to pursue the questions for a few reasons. One of them, I, as a cyclist in town, I find that the conditions of the roads, it's not just the county having trouble. And so I would like us to really be seriously considering the weight of vehicles that are, pass-through vehicles coming through here. But as someone with interest in businesses quite literally underneath my bedroom, I appreciate that we've got commercial traffic that needs to be accommodated, and that's fine with me. And I also know, you know, Oliver's has fairly large trucks that have to come in to deliver there, and that's, you know, seems par for the course. I do think that we have a disproportionate amount of vehicles, very heavy vehicles coming through, and I hear them frequently, sometimes they wake me up when I'm sleeping. And so I think that both the road conditions, but also the livability of the city is worth us considering. We have a number of businesses that have outdoor eating facilities along the way, too, and so both the noise and the fumes are an issue there for those businesses. So I think it's actually in our interest, our commercial interests, to limit the pass-through traffic, and so I would really encourage you pursuing it. We don't need to be overly restrictive, I don't think we have to be nasty about it. I, I don't want Cataná to have the reputation, you know, if truckers are in the area, oh, we're never going into Cataná because they don't like us, I mean, we want them to realize, but they have to realize that it's a, it's a living space, not just a commercial space right downtown, there's some of us living there. So if you can keep those in mind, and I, I'm going to follow the issue, and I am really happy to see it on here. I know that I can speak on behalf of several of my neighbors in the cohousing community there, too, that we're all very interested in this. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anybody else who has public comment? Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. When the folks at Frog Song brought their development before the city council, one of the issues was the noise and the traffic. And I assured them that they should not build there and then come to the city later and claim that the traffic and the noise and the, and so forth are a nuisance. And they promised that they would not. They wanted to build so bad, and they wanted to live right there on that truck route, they promised. The bars, the noise, the music, the trucks, no problem, let us build. So let's just remember that for a second. Now, we all know why this issue came before the city council, because Mr. Lammon spoke at his meet-the-mayor evening, and said that this was something he wanted to have addressed. Okay, so that's the foundation here. Now, look at the stack of letters that the city has received on this issue. One from Neil Hancock, okay? There you go, right there, Mr. Liar himself. Okay, then we have another one-
Okay, can we stick to-
Excuse me, ma'am, he's a liar.
Okay, can we just stick to the discussion of direction on the ordinance?
I'm saying, yes, please discount, disregard Mr. Neil's Hancock, because he has no credibility.
That has nothing to do with anything.
I'm asking you to do that. And please don't interrupt me again.
I'm interrupting you because you're doing a personal attack on somebody who's not here to do-
Yes, and that's legal, ma'am, and I will do it again. Mr. Neil Hancock is a liar, and I'm asking you to please disregard his comments.
Okay.
I will move on, thank you.
Please, thank you.
The next issue is the fact that the exceptions in this particular ordinance that was brought in as a, as an example, is big enough to drive a truck through. Pardon the pun. Any truck driver can come through and claim a number of exceptions, and this is going to be an enforcement nightmare for our police department. They're going to spend more time in traffic court defending themselves over these citations when they're, when they're disputed, that it's not feasible and not practical for this town to go down this road. This, these types of ordinances are also discriminatory. To discriminate on these trucks, when Cataná has had a truck route, has been a historical truck route on Old Red for decades, and because the city did not, not properly build the road and maintain the road up to the specs necessary for these trucks, is very telling. This is a truck route, and it has not been maintained properly, because you wasted money in other areas. The fact is, is what will you ban next on Cataná, on Old Redwood Highway? Will it be the motorcycles? I mean, ask the chief how many citations he's, his department has, has written for excessive noise on motorcycles and automobiles. Get the stats. And who is to say, Mr. City Manager, whether these trucks, truck drivers are using Cataná for a shortcut or not? It's not for you to assume or presume what they're, what these truck drivers are doing through Cataná. That's irresponsible.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can I have one more minute, ma'am?
No, I think you're good. So-
If my name was Draper, would I?
Nope. So, is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment on the issue of the truck route that has not been written yet, but we're providing direction to our city staff to prepare one? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and bring it back to the council. Are there any further questions to follow up? Councilmember Delauso?
I, you want to go first? You had your hand up?
Oh, sorry, I was looking the other way.
Why don't we go that way?
Fine, sure. So again, you know, in looking at the city of Vacaville with this central business district, I'm just wondering if we can have some, a bit of a discussion on that, because it was an interesting concept, may or may not work here, I don't know, but at least worth, worth discussing. You know, Old Redwood Highway is, was a historic truck route, absolutely. And then it was superseded and maintained by another truck route, which is called US-101, if anybody's ever driven on that. And what we're seeing is that there is definitely very large vehicles that have come down Old Red, regardless of whether there's a development there or not, there was houses there before the freeway was built. And I think it's high time, when you have outdoor eating establishments, residential, a mix of commercial and residential, why would you, especially if you actually eat in a restaurant in Cataná and partake in our businesses, why would you want a huge truck come barreling down, even if it's driving the speed limit, a huge truck come down, that lovely smell of diesel? You know, I think we're doing this for the right reasons, we're certainly not banning anybody, because, as was already stated twice, that there would be an alternative route. So I think giving these vehicles an option, should they have a reason to come in? And then again, there's this whole predication of if they're making some kind of a delivery, whether it's fuel, or food, or whatever else we can think of. Okay, there's exceptions to the rule, and that's what I heard, is that correct? I mean, just in general? So anyway, I really, you know, I think this is actually overdue. You know, it's something I would have liked to have seen years ago, and so I'm glad we're looking at it now. And we don't need to get into the discussion right now on the CBD, but if there is some interest, and the only problem with doing that is, it's going to take a lot longer to implement some kind of a policy here, so I don't want to slow this process down. If we were to adopt some type of resolution and move forward on that, if we do, could we go back and do an amendment if we thought a central business district was an appropriate thing to look at later on? Is that-
Yes, what you would be doing, I believe, is you'd either be amending your current ordinance, or rescinding that one and creating a new one, but an ordinance can always be amended under the law.
Yeah, it would, it would seem like it would just be something we could add at some point in the future, so, so I don't want it to slow any kind of process down of whatever's going to happen this evening. But again, I just want to say that I'm definitely in favor of moving forward on this for all the reasons I've stated.
Okay, and I would just, I was going to point out, too, we do have a definition in our ordinance now for central traffic district, so we could always have something following that, limiting it to this is what the business area is that would be affected.
Yeah, and again, my only slight hesitation is, you know, are we going to be taking into consideration future developments?
Gotcha, yeah.
So, not trying to lock us in, but anyway, thank you.
Okay. So Councilmember Lammon, since I didn't see your hand earlier.
Well, this is an interesting one for me. I've lived here almost 30 years now, and I remember many, many years ago, many times just enjoying really nice evenings down in our downtown, and kind of just enjoying that rather unusual small-town ambiance, seeing neighbors walking around, enjoying a meal, and then noticing the one fly in the ointment, as it were, rather large fly, was the parade of rather large trucks that became, very obviously, at least from my perception, as best as I could perceive, pass-through vehicles that perhaps weren't delivering here, but with some thought, it was very clear, this is a shortcut. It's much easier to come this direction, if you're coming from, say, the Pengrove area or Northern Petaluma, than it is to take Highway 101, because you can bypass that grade, save a little diesel. And sometimes, for all of us, it's just habit. You know, we get in these habits for years, and even after all the tax dollars went in to fix 101, so we could handle this traffic as it is meant to do, we get into these habits, sometimes it's hard to change, even though perhaps that's not the ideal thing. But I appreciate the comment from Mr. Sengas in particular tonight, because it pointed out, there's really a lot more to this than I initially thought. As I started looking into this a couple of years ago, once I was on the council and mayor, and it is true, as mayor, this was something I decided I thought would be good for us to do. And it was interesting to see that everybody agreed, or darn near everybody. Beyond the fact that this is detrimental to perhaps one of the key, largest assets we have in this city, which is our downtown, it really detracts from that old downtown destination value, something that's important to the people that live there, who work there. It's really important to the future, to what may happen in the northern gateway, a lot of things like that. This, this is one of the few really great key- This is one of the few really great key assets that have naturally developed here, and I think we really have to take care of, so there's that. But as we got into this, I found it isn't just that. There's a lot of neighborhoods that are impacted. And despite our first-wall common denominator, it isn't just one neighborhood. We're talking Red Hill. We're talking Charles Street. McGinnis Circle. The Dorfman Drive neighborhood. Park Avenue. The Macklin neighborhoods. It goes on and on. A lot of people impacted by this. So that was an eye-opener, I think. And finally, as we look at money we're putting into roads, and roads are on everybody's mind, there's been a lot of that in the press, no reason we can't talk just a little more about roads. As we look into the investment we're putting in our town, and particularly the southern portion of our town, right here, right by McGinnis Circle, essentially, that's something that gets torn up without any compensation. So obviously, this seems like a good idea. In general, I think that's wonderful. I would agree, future development. I see the proposal that staff put forward seems to indicate the value of just removing that section from our southern city limit up to La Plaza Park along Old Redwood. This leaves alternate routes for traffic in all directions, basically using Highway 101, or alternatively, if you're slightly farther to the east, you could use Petaluma Hill Road. And it also tends to take care of some of the other concerns that we're asked her in terms of making findings. Number one, it's sad, is these concerns that we've laid out, and it also gives these alternate routes. In terms of motorcycle noise and things like that, I understand the concern, and that may be valuable, too, but I think we have some tools to deal with that, and that could be a separate noise ordinance thing. So that doesn't mean if we don't wrap that into it, it isn't something that the council could visit if the community truly is concerned. I'd certainly be open to that, because we've seen that, too. But I think one step at a time. So I'm supportive of this. I think what you've got on paper for us seems workable. I pictured having exceptions for deliveries in the area, obviously, for emergency vehicle, response vehicles, transit buses, and any pre-existing, and this was mentioned, actually, in the package here, pre-existing waste hauling routes that are for Katati waste collection. That would be important to have, too. And there may be others, I'm sure, will come up. But with that, and I think the fact that most truckers, if they're delivering something somewhere, they're going to have a bill of lading saying where that's going, that they should be able, easily able to produce. So I think it'll be actually very easy, at least during that initial focused enforcement period, for us to follow, too. I think there's a lot of value, so I'd be supportive of this, and I appreciate the support of the council and the community on this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then Councilmember Harvey?
I'm generally supportive of this. I think that one of the things that we have been striving to do is to keep the old downtown Katati available to people and for dining and being out walking and all of the above. And even, you know, I can recall, you know, on election days, all standing down during election and seeing quite a lot of trucks really just passing by straight from the south end of town, just going out to the freeway. They weren't really doing any kind of business within the city. And I agree with Councilmember Deloso, you know, it's not Old Redwood Highway anymore. They created Highway 101, and that is, you know, the highway that those trucks should be using. So I would like us to, you know, really protect that gem of the downtown that we have, and if this helps us to do that, I think that we should. And I would also like to see a little bit more from staff in the organs, more specifics on the enforcement, I think, because I think that will be a key to, you know, how this works out. But generally, I am supportive of this.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Moore?
I don't really have any more to add that hasn't been already addressed eloquently by my fellow council members. I think it supports our general plan goals and livability in Katati. And I would support addressing that and looking at some staff recommendations in there.
Okay, great, thank you. So I'm sure you've been taking notes as we've been going along. I was just going to reiterate some of the issues that would fall under findings would be safety, livability, the noise through the downtown area especially. It sounds like generally it'd be a good idea to do the weight limit, and then looking, listing alternative routes, and then obviously making exceptions for folks who are making the deliveries in town. And then we can also bring in any language possible for the central business district, as Councilmember Deloso mentioned, just that we can then, as we do a proposed ordinance, we can then have a public discussion on specific language that we put in there, and then as well, addressing the issue of enforcement seemed to have come ups. So I think that hits everything. So whether we address it versus, you know, size of the truck, weight of the truck, and I think also it was a good idea to look at neighboring cities so that we're not doing something so completely unusual versus, say, a Ronard Park ordinance or a Petaluma ordinance, so if you're driving through Petaluma and suddenly you've got these completely different truck ordinance rules. So keeping it consistent is something we've talked about with other ordinances in the past. So I think that would be a pretty good summary. Is it--
One last question, actually, something you brought up made me think of it, and I want to ask staff, talking about this, since we're essentially removing this small section or this one section from the truck route, there may not be a need for this, but we mentioned that we have some widely disparate sizes. Ronard Park is 8 million pounds, or actually 7.5 tons. We're sitting at five, and Sebastopol, who is a similar-sized city, but actually has a much wider downtown, is sitting at about three tons. Is that something to revisit, or is that essentially rendered moot by the--
I think the difference between a three-ton and a five-ton vehicle is so minuscule, I don't know what vehicle they're trying to capture by that difference.
So that would be negligible in practice and probably of not much benefit to take the time to look at.
I don't believe, yeah, I don't believe it would have any practical effect.
Okay. And I don't see, given the fact that what the direction we seem to be going, at least in this point in time, I don't see it having a huge bearing on that either. So just wanted to ask, because I thought while we're dealing with this, it would be a good question to look at if we needed to. Thank you.
And then the last thing that I remembered, too, is, and a lot of people have come to us with concerns of safety as far as being a pedestrian or a cyclist in the downtown area, because we do have a lot of shops where you can sit outside or eat and walk to the next destination, and so that would be something, too, to address under findings, because people are already concerned about walking around downtown and crossing the street and lighting and things like that. So to add to it, a 10-ton truck might be a little bit unnerving. So anyway, I just thought I'd throw that out there, since that's been an issue that's come up before regarding the downtown area. Okay, so--
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
If we're going to look at this, and there was potential amendments to the ordinance, would we just be amending Section 10.40?
There would be--
Or would there be--
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of the existing truck route ordinance is in 10.40 and the subsection beneath that. So I think that's where the bulk of the, I mean, we have to go through it, you know, and check, make sure we cross all our Ts and dot all our Is, but I would imagine the bulk of the revisions would happen in there.
And looking at Ordinance Number 758 and reading through that, there were some questions regarding some of the other sections on there, and I don't know if that's something that we would, it would be an appropriate time to discuss those, or maybe to bring those up at a future time, because they're not significant to this, but they did pique my curiosity on some of the issues. And one of the examples I can give you, just to give you an idea, was regarding abandoned vehicles and abatements and things like that. I guess you would have to address 10.100 if you're going to talk about fines and/or points on driving record.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think the intent would be to try to focus it on the sections and sections that are relevant to this particular topic.
Right.
And if there's other specific things that are of interest, we certainly can, if they're, if they're small clarifications, that's easy enough, I think, to incorporate, but if, you know, I would suggest not embarking on a--
We don't want to reinvent the wheel, to speak.
Right.
Okay, what would be an appropriate time to talk about some of those other little nuances of 785?
What do you mean by 785?
Well, the original ordinance is number 785.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
So the back section of the packet. I would, you know, I would, if it's easy enough, I would suggest just giving them to me now, and then we'll see if we can work them in, if it's, you know.
Okay. Is that okay with the council?
Certainly, great.
And some of the notes that I had gathered, and maybe they're minute and don't necessarily need to be addressed at this point, but if you're going to look at something like that, I thought if you could clean up some of the language in there.
And is this just on the commercial vehicles section?
Well, no, because you've got the 10.100 on the penalties, and then the only, the abandoned vehicles, so 10.60, trip reduction, 10.80. I don't know that we even enforce that. I don't know if in whatever year this was, '86, was it? '96?
2006.
2006. If we had employers that fit within the trip reduction section, 10.80.
I'd have to look into the background of that.
Okay, yeah. So if, maybe my suggestion would be is if you looked at some of these, if you looked at, I'm sure you're going to look at 10.100, but if you looked at the 10.80 and then 10.60 in there and think that those are solid enough the way they are, I would be okay with that. I just think they're a little bit big.
Okay.
Okay, and then do we need to do a formal vote, since it's just direction? So, okay. So you feel like you've gotten--
Just one more clarification, if you would. On the, on the central traffic or central business district piece, what are the germane points that you want me to look into, staff to look into on that?
Okay, well, since I brought that up, I think what I'd want to do, which I didn't do well enough, is maybe go back with what Vacaville wrote, look at our central traffic district, which seems to cover it. The one thing that was glaringly missing to me, but then is really not a part of a central business district, was the 116 corridor. And only because I wasn't thinking of thoroughfares, I was just thinking of future businesses, and are we going to have any unintended consequences from what we might be pushing forward on any future businesses? But I mean, 116 is a whole nother story. And so if you're fine, if you guys are fine with it, I'd be happy to kind of read through this and then send any suggestions to the city manager in the next day or two, is what I would do, if that's all right.
Well, sure, because then we're going to get the ordinance, proposed ordinance language that we can all look at and have the public look at, and--
Yeah, absolutely.
So would your idea of that be that that business district would be from 116 or Gramercy Highway through to Page?
That would seem to make sense, since the focus is Old Red, and that's kind of what is already outlined in our existing ordinance. But I thought by taking a look at that and then looking at sort of the intent of Vacaville and how successful it's been, or has it impaired any ability of any, you know, commerce? I don't know. The intent is obviously not to, especially when you have exceptions to the rule. So I just, I just think in all fairness, I should spend a little more time, reread all these and make some comparative notes. And I may, I may send Damian a note saying, you know what? What we have is fine, because I was thinking of it sort of in a different light, and I really should focus on it as far as a thoroughfare is concerned.
Well, I wonder if, you know, it's hard to know what was going on for Vacaville. I don't know it as well as I know downtown Katati. But I have the sense it might have been a way, them defining a business district, of just defining an area. For example, for us, we have that one route that is already existing as a truck route. They may have had multiple ones that made it very difficult. You know, I would, I guess I would be curious if there's, if staff sees any ancillary benefit beyond the benefits that meet the needs we all retalked, you, the findings, that they think that defining a business district could bring to us, that'd be a great time to talk about it. I get the sense that this was just a different way that Vacaville used to define an area, that they wanted to have a separate class of travel in, and that was the finding for it, because it was a special business district, and therefore it had certain needs that weren't being met by letting regular traffic through that might be okay in other portions of the city. So I think that all the suggestions I've heard tonight, whether it's looking at administrative cleanup, or whether it's taking a second look at this on our part or on staff's part to see if there's some value in reassessing that, are fine. I think the general direction seems solid enough that this is a perfect time to consider that, and if anything pops up, the next time we visit this would be a great time to talk about it.
All right. You feel you've got more than adequate direction? Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Great. So we'll move on to item five, which is the Downtown Specific Plan Revitalization Project Award. And I will turn it over to our city manager, Damian Obed.
The city recently advertised for bid the Downtown Specific Plan Revitalization, Area Revitalization Project, which is the widening of Old Redwood Highway between 116 and roughly hub cyclical, and then creation of pedestrian gateway features at the intersection of 116 and Old Red, as well as continuous sidewalks on both sides of Old Redwood Highway, and wider sidewalks, streetlights, decorative-style streetlights and street furnishings to improve both the accessibility, but also the appearance of the gateway area. The project was bid in three segments. So that segment I described was part of the base bid. There was a bid alternate one, which was the segment of Old Red between hub and just short of William George. And then bid segment three was including William George down to La Plaza. And the low bidder was evaluated based on the base bid plus bid alternate two, which is the William George to La Plaza segment, as those were the higher priority segments. The original scope, which included the entire roadway, was what was envisioned with redevelopment funding, and of course, that's no longer available. So that's the reduced scope that we're talking about tonight. And the low bidder for the project, really based on any combination of base bid and bid alternates that you look at, was Argonaut Constructors. And their total contract amount that they proposed was 2.3 million. The staff report has a request for 2.6 million, and the reason why is to accommodate construction contingencies, as well as construction management and inspection that go along with a construction project. And a couple caveats I'll note, this, if council were to adopt the attached resolution, the actual contract award would not occur until July 1st, and it would have to also be included in the 1516 budget, as was discussed in the general fund study session. So the funding was already set aside in the study session that the council has discussed and considered, but obviously, until the council actually adopts the budget, we wouldn't award the project. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions on this.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council, see if there's any questions or comments right now. Okay, any on the side?
No real questions. We've been over this for a long time, looked this for a long time, so I don't think it'll be a surprise, and I believe I'll be generally supportive of this personally. I did want to just state that I noticed the reserve is set aside in terms of contingency, and most importantly, construction management inspection, too, and I just kind of support that strongly, because I think for an important, high-visibility project like this that should serve Catalans for literally generations to come, it's important. So I think that's very prudent and a good idea. I have a few further comments maybe later, but for now, thank you.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Okay. Councilmember Harvey?
I do have a question, and it's concerning the area down-- I, I do have a question, and it's concerning the area down, down there and the parking spaces. It seemed to me that in the last discussion, there was a lessening of parking spaces, but my recollection is not that it was going from seventeen to eight. So I'd like a little clarification on that, please.
So the, the current design includes, instead of a 12-foot sidewalk in front of that parking lot, we're talking about Rancho Realty and Arches Glass. The sidewalk was, was set at 10 feet, and by doing that and working with those adjacent business owners, they were able to preserve the vast majority of their parking spaces. In fact, I mean, some of their parking spaces currently are, are on where the sidewalk is. So I, I think the net loss was three spaces out of the seventeen they currently have, or they currently use, I should say. If my recollection serves me correctly, I believe it was three spaces, but it was a relatively minor amount compared to, you know, some of the earlier discussions that we'd had.
So if I understand you correctly, we're really just losing, it sounds like, in the neighborhood, three spaces, not nine spaces?
Yeah, that's what's in the staff report.
Correct, yeah, it's, it's not on the order of nine, it's, it's...
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay, great, and I remember that discussion too with the businesses who were present, and they were quite happy with the way we were able to compromise and preserve as much space as possible, so. All right, so I will move into public comment on this item. I do have a card from Lori Alderman. Did you wanna come up on this issue?
This is off my head, so. Why, on page 14 in the June 2nd one, it had transfer from the general fund to the grants fund for 1,000, $1,754,020. And why was that done? It's, you're using general funds, which are city funds. Then the money gets put into the grants fund and used, you're not using all, I, I started as an accountant seat, accountant major, so I can read financial statements. And the, also the, if you look at the beginning of your reserves, you started at the end of 2014, it looks like you have 3 million, and then at the end of 2016, you have a million and a half. Where did those monies go? Where, and who asked for you guys to have this down? Who, when have you ever asked the city of Cattati, any of us, whether we wanted this downtown? If we want, we can't have a recreation department, we can't have, we have nothing in the west side, and you want to spend all this money on the downtown? You kept, used it, measured, measure G funds were supposed to be essential city services. That's what you promised, and you're using it for, for not what, you didn't use it for more police, you used less salaries for police according to the, your budget. You used it more for benef, you used a little bit more overall for benefits. I mean, I looked over this whole budget, and there's so many glaring things. You only spent $300 on public information. You, you kept this all in the dark. You really need to look over and think, and you shouldn't pass this until you have some public hearings and make sure, I'd hate to be a, the construction company and then have a backlash against you guys for passing something that nobody believes in, in this town. And by the way, I, my family has lived here 43 years. I was Prue Draper's paper girl. I babysat for half the, the early mayors of this town's kids and, I don't know. Oh, and when the, there was the marijuana scandal where there was council, the council was, and the police chief were, I was a seven-year, a nine-year-old riding on my bike during the news story. So I think I have a right to know, be seen and heard in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and, well, and just to clarify with this, we've had several meetings about the downtown specific plan project, and then the, we had the budget meeting, so hopefully we'll be able to come to that as well, so that we can talk about the numbers, so, but... Okay, I was just commenting that we've had open budget meetings, so I was just acknowledging that. So, yes, Mr. Berch, I see your hand up.
Well, thank goodness for the public who passed Measure G, because this, this project would be worse had G not passed. I wanna bring attention to the staff report, which on the second paragraph, it says, "The current proposed project does not make functional changes to the roadway," and that is an outright lie. The staff report is an error, and since it was done intentionally, it is fraudulent. The fact is, that portion of Redwood Highway is five lanes. I've said this over the workshops, every step of the way on this project. There's two lanes in each direction and a center turnout lane, which has been imperative for commerce, for deliveries, for people pulling out in the traffic. It's, the, the, the staff report says that no private lands will be taken for this project. Well, the fact is, that center lane is being used to make, make up the room necessary for the bike lanes and the extended sidewalks. You can't make huge sidewalks and bike lanes out of thin air. They came from someplace, the center fifth lane. The staff report is an error. The person who prepared this, again, is lying. Now, getting back to the downtown specific plan, since all of you were at all the planning shretts and all the meetings regarding the downtown specific plan, and our debate about that plan when I was on the city council, you will remember Diane Thompson, city manager Thompson, stating and answering Bob Coleman's question, "How much is this going to cost?" And the public portion of the downtown specific plan, according to the consultants and the accountants, was, is $73 million over 30 years. That's the public portion. The streets, the infrastructure, unifying La Plaza Park, the new roadways, the parking garage downtown, oh yeah, go look at the plans, the parking lots out behind St. Joseph's Church, all those parking lots, those are public infrastructures. This is, the, the downtown specific plan is the largest public works project that Cattati may ever see. It's $73 million in projected expenses over 30 years. Has nothing to do with four-story apartment buildings, has nothing to do with people's solar panels, has nothing to do with low-income housing. That's all additional. The plan consists all the way down East Cattati Avenue. There are major disruptions in gas lines, communications, electrical, sewage, water. It's gonna take millions of dollars, and I think that those, that estimate was conservative. And when I asked Diane Thompson, "Where is this money gonna come from?", and all eyes laid on her, and she says, "It will come from federal and state grants, not the general fund." Know your history, go back and listen to the podcasts, read the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the downtown specific plan project? Yes, please.
So again, for the record, it's Richard Sanghas at 101 Ross Street, number 21. As cyclist and as a pedestrian who's frequently walking from the, the areas right downtown at Old Red and Charles, where that meets, walking out to Pete's and whatnot up that direction, I'm glad to see plans for improved pedestrian access and cycling out, and, and I think that the, given the long, complicated history this town has had, that this seems like a reasonable resolution moving forward, and so it, it, there have been opportunities for many of us to be commenting along the way. I know that not all of us have availed ourselves of it, but I do think that you folks have made a reasonable effort to get the information out there. I've been able to find it. So it just seems like a natural next step, and you have some support.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Lehman? I didn't know if you were...
Well, let's see here. Let's start. Some questions for staff. I don't know if our city attorney or our city manager will wanna answer this. She'll probably be fighting to answer it, I'm sure, with great gusto, but, so let me ask you this in terms of the question. Is our report in terms of how the bike lanes are being done and the fact that there's no changes to the lanes in the downtown? Is there anything in this report that is a lie or fraudulent? In your opinions, and to the best of your knowledge? I'd just like to get that on record. I prefer to think that my staff doesn't bring forth purposely things that have lies and are fraudulent, and when I hear that, I, I feel like I kinda have to point that out.
Yeah, well, I guess, as the author of the report, I would say that, that no, there's nothing that's inaccurate.
And for the record, I'll point out, for those who aren't here and can't see, he looked me right in the eyes and said that with a smile, so, so I'm feeling good about that, thank you. And I, and I wanna clarify this, 'cause gosh, we've had to talk about this publicly numerous times. Is there any space coming out of that center lane, the su, what you usually call the suicide lane, to help these bike lanes be made?
No, the center lane's getting wider than currently.
Thank you very much for that. Going back up, just in the general question of about being concerned, I, I underhand the concern, because, you know, we're all busy with our lives, we have a lot of things going on, and it's easy sometimes not keep track of everything that's going on, but this has been discussed for years, and I can tell you, people have complained for years. As a matter of fact, some very people in this room, gosh, gosharudis, have complained about weeds in the downtown numerous times, so I'm hoping that everybody that, the few people that have those complaints, now that we're doing something about those weeds, will get on the bad wing and support that. Because honestly, I can tell you, for the folks that live in the neighborhood, not only just near there, but all over, one of the main concerns I've heard for years is, "Hey, what about that northern part of the downtown? It's a little rough, seriously speaking," and that's a concern that everyone's had, and I think this is an attempt to move forward in that. And in terms of where our funds go, as someone who's a neighbor and lives on the west side too, I certainly love to see, make sure that myself and our neighbors get as much value as possible, but it's not lost in the, wherever we invest, we all benefit from it. I, I may not live in that part of town, but it's an area that I walk, use, and my friends and neighbors do a lot too. So, so I think we all hopefully benefit from it, and I think if we look at it that way, maybe we could see that. Coming back to this, I really like, this serves motorists, bicyclists and pedestrians, everybody, because bottom line, if you don't serve all those people as best you can, you're not gonna have a successful downtown. I think this is an attempt to do this, so I think that's really a good thing. And the last comment I wanna make, just in general, I'm gonna thank our new city manager, although his work in this was largely done as our city engineer. Both number one, more recently for his outreach to the business community and making sure the parking issue was resolved, I was very pleased to say that, see how that was done. And I know that everyone in the downtown really appreciated that too. But more that, I wanna give you credit for kind of working miracles overtime, 'cause the reason we actually have this grant funding still is largely to the work you put into it, because basically, from all practical experience I have or have seen, this is something that likely wouldn't have remained the way things went, but you worked very hard, put a lot of overtime, as I remember during the Christmas season, to put us in this position where we're actually having this benefit for everyone in the downtown. So I'd like to just put on the record the credit for that. Thank you for that. I think this is something that's gonna benefit Cattati for decades to come, and you deserve a lot of credit for that, so good job.
All right, Vice Mayor Moore?
Having attended many of the shretts years ago, I, I can't imagine a downtown specific plan that's gonna be $73 million. The number is bantered about so much that it's, maybe if they say it enough, people might believe it, but it's just, it's garbage, and I know it's garbage, and for the record, it's baloney. I'm really looking forward to it. I think it'll be a nice little project. Rome wasn't built in a day, probably didn't cost $73 million. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to this and would encourage support on this. And I don't know that I could add anymore to that.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Harvey?
You just asked me?
Did you have any comments before?
Yeah, I, I just, Mark covered most of it, but I also want to thank Damian for all the hard work that he did in order to work to keep our grant, because I know that because of all the things that have happened over the last several years, he worked very hard to keep that. And I really appreciate all the negotiations that he did in order to keep that funding for us. And I'm just really excited, we've been, gonna do this for so long, I just can't wait to see it become a reality, because I think that fixing up that whole end of town is going to make just a world of difference. If you stand there at, say, Papa Murphy's Pizza, and you look one way down towards the park, you know, it's, it's the way we want it, it's the small-town atmosphere that we want, and it would be so nice to be able to turn the other way and look up towards 116 and see the kind of small-town walkability that we want to have. So I'm excited about this.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember DeLasso?
You know, the figure of 73 million, regardless of wherever that number may or may not have come from, having been involved in numerous planning processes over 30 years of doing planning efforts, that's a believable figure, honestly. You could, when you're talking about, and this is what's critical that people don't get sometimes, is you're talking about a maximum build-out of a plan. And when you're looking at that and you're talking about it could involve these buildings that are residential and these buildings that are commercial and road improvements, and it's sort of that pie in the sky. You know, if we wanted to do this entire plan, I don't doubt that it could be $73 million. And if, those are probably figures that are based on, you know, from several years back, and it could even be a higher figure, but that's maximum build-out. And rarely does any project have a maximum build-out. So regardless of what that number is, it's a figure, should you ever be able to implement this entire plan, the likelihood of that is not very likely, and it's over a 30-year period. So those numbers mean absolutely nothing. I know they're being used to make it sound like, "Look, this is a waste of money, you're never gonna find this money," and that's fine. People can have their own, you know, their own opinions that aren't based on fact. The center lanes, Old Redwood Highway is a county road or state road? County road, is it not, Old Redwood Highway?
Old Redwood Highway, well, city road, right? I mean...
No, I'm asking, I don't, don't answer with a question.
Okay.
Is it a city road? Is it a county road?
It is, it's a city road from our city limits to basically 116.
Okay. It's not a private lane? For example, that center lane is not a private lane, in other words?
No.
Yeah, okay. I just wanna get that, that clear. You know, yeah, I think there's a lot of good in this, and it's kind of miraculous that 1.1 million was still able to be held on to by the city, so I think that's great. I see nothing but, you know, appropriate improvements, you know? Who here is gonna say, "I think sidewalks are a horrible thing," or, you know, we're just chasing our tails. It's a great project, let's just move it forward. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. And again, I'll just reiterate, I, I'm very excited about this project. I, I know I've talked to people who've come to visit, especially from out of town, like if they're coming to the Jazz Festival for the first time or coming to an event or something, and to have that be the first thing you see when you come off of Highway 101, it doesn't present, it doesn't put our best foot forward, so I'm very excited about the idea of kind of cleaning that up and making it more, more, more entying with our downtown as well, so I'm looking forward to this as well. So let's, I will then see if there's a motion.
Sure. I make a motion to... I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to award construction and inspection slash management agreements not to exceed $2,669,713.
I would second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mayor Skilman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Councilmember DeLasso?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lammon?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I have nothing really to add tonight, other than just a reminder that I think everyone's aware of, that we have a budget study session next Tuesday night, and it'll be in the council chambers, and it's on enterprise and other special funds.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, so on the issue of having a budget study session on June 16th, Comrade?
Yeah, thank you. Speaking on the city manager's report, since that was the only item that he spoke about, there's been, a lot been happening the last couple of weeks in Kattati, and it bothers me to no end that this is the only item the city manager has placed in his report tonight. There's many things to report in Kattati, and I think we deserve a little bit more extensive, comprehensive report than that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment on the city manager's report? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment and move on to city council reports. I will go first, ha-ha, because I can, no, just kidding. So, I would just report out, on May 30th, I attended the mosquito and vector control open house, which was actually quite a large event, so that was interesting to check out their facility there and see all the creepy crawlies. It was very popular with kids as well, so that was a fun event to attend. And then I also went to the first day of the farmer's market on June 4th, and I'm looking forward to yet another ribbon cutting, which has been always a good, it's a fun thing to do as mayor, to hold the wood and scissors, so I'm enjoying that, and that'll be tomorrow at Stacks. And I'll turn to Councilmember DeLasso.
Actually, I won't be able to attend that tomorrow, but I will say that I had dinner there over the weekend, and it was really fabulous. I mean, it's amazing, when I saw these little quantities, when I sat at the table, the fork was this big and the spoon was this big, and I said, "I don't think this is going to work for me." But you were satiated when you were done with the meal, and it's great, there's just a nice mix of stuff, so, I'm sorry, I won't be able to get there tomorrow night just because of work. And I really, you know, I had nothing to report.
Okay, Councilmember Harvey?
I just have the reporting of my new granddaughter that came yesterday.
Congratulations.
Mom and baby are doing well, and we're excited to have a new member in our family.
Is Grandma doing well?
Grandma's doing great.
Hey, excellent.
I went swimming with the two existing grandchildren today, all afternoon, so it was fun.
All right, great. Councilmember Lammon?
Thank you, Mayor Skilman. Two quick updates tonight, one from Sonoma County Transportation Association, and we had a presentation from one of the data management scientists, a doctor from, that works for ABAK, looking at some in-depth research about how they try to discern what trends could be in terms of growth in the county in years to come, and you can imagine, they look at everything under the sun in terms of just about every dataset you could think of, and I'm not going to repeat them all, although a lot of them were very interesting, but one really left out, and it surprised me. And it was an assessment comparing us to about, oh, nine other Bay Area counties, and we actually had the lowest median household income in 2013 of all these counties, and as a matter of fact, adjusted for inflation, below $1,979. A real eye-opener for me, even if, knowing this is data, there's some variability, the fact of that being that low, even if there's some change to be made, is just striking. And interestingly enough, of all the other counties listed, only Solano also had an income that was below $1,979, but of course, their income was higher. So, I think it's just a very timely thing to bring forward, especially since the supervisors are looking at things like a living wage and stuff, and I believe they're doing that this afternoon, probably end of the night, but if we ask ourselves sometimes about the reticence perhaps of the public to fund infrastructure, understandably, or inability for people to afford housing, it's clearly that it's not really just a lack of housing, that's not the issue, it's the cost and the relative income that people have. It's amazing to see income staying flat for people for that long a time. So, I thought I'd share that, I thought that was interesting, if somewhat bad news, so I'll leave you with some slightly better news, that'll help your pocketbook a little bit. So, now I'm quite empowered to do our final budget adoption and rate setting, and rates are staying where they are. Again, somewhat unusual, usually most, they always go up a little bit, in this case, and in the future, years to come, that may well happen, and certainly will, I would imagine, but for this year, we're staying where we are, which at this point is about 6% to 9% on average below PG&E, higher for some low-income categories, up to actually 14% in a few very small categories, but the exciting thing is, as PG&E most likely raises its rates, this means your rate will drop in comparison. So, I think that's substantial value. Along with that, we're putting a very substantial amount into reserves to make sure that we're in a prudent position, one, able to weather years that aren't as good as the last few that we've had in the future, and also to make our credit rating and our risk rating more attractive. So, money in essence is cheaper for us, and we can drive those rates lower, a lot of advantages to that, so two good pieces of news that work together, and look for your rates to stay low.
Okay, great, thank you. Vice Mayor Moore?
I attended the board meeting for REMF last Thursday. We have two new, we have a new president, a new vice president for REMF, Reagan as the president, and he is with, City of Windsor, is it, or Hiltberg? Reagan? Anyway, he's the, he's the current president, and then the vice president is our neighbor, Darren, from Rota Park. And our workers' comp rates are staying the same for this year. Our vehicle insurance is going up 1%. It would have gone up much greater if we were not in a pool, because Kattati's experience in the vehicle arena was not so great. I'm guessing, I don't know, motorcycles or something, I don't know, something like that. But overall, it's doing pretty good, so we're just going up 1% in that arena, and then workers' comp is staying flat for this year. Enrollment is going pretty well for the self-funded pool. I don't know if, there was, there was a, we might have a slight delay in one of the components, a vision plan, but other than that, everything else is rolling out pretty well, and the pilot cities of Arcata and Fort Bragg have done well in their rollout, so things are looking pretty good in that arena. I think that's it for now.
Okay, great. So, with that, I will conclude our regular meeting, and then we will go back into a closed session to finish up our item one, and I would ask for a five-minute...
Bio.
Bio break, yes, that's, that's our nickname for it, and then we'll convene for the closed session at 8:50. Thanks.